At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, if you would call the roll, please.
I cannot hear you.
Present.
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 Yeah, we can't hear you at all.
Could you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you, Debbie, but we couldn't hear Mrs. Camp House.
Okay. All right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and eternal.
All right, moving along in our agenda. Item 1.04 is the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Greaver. Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Rare.
Yes.
The next agenda, or the next item on the agenda, we're going to group 1.05 and 1.06 together. This is the adopt, the approval of the minutes. This is from the regular meeting, June 25th, and the committee meeting, July 7th. So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Rare?
Yes.
Okay, item two on our agenda is the discussion, and we have Ron Hicks from SHP. So, Mr. Hicks, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me? ...letter that I believe you've all gotten a draft of regarding the building permit process for the high school renovation work. I think the letter is pretty self-explanatory. I'll give you a little bit of background. But I understand that everyone has gotten a copy of the letter. The letter was presented a week or so ago preliminarily to both you as well as the building department. The building department had asked this letter, asked for this letter as a request because we're in a little bit of a unique circumstance with regard to the phasing of the project and the fact that we've determined a decent amount of unforeseen conditions that cannot be rectified before school starts. They were unknown conditions prior to the start of school, or part of the start of the work. And they, they preexisted the project. So the fact that these conditions are now known is certainly a positive move in the right direction because it seems to be some uncertainty, at least on my mind, as to whether this stuff was permitted by the building department at that time. I thought that it was, but the building department has taken a little bit of exception with my assertion in that regard. They did not feel that those conditions were necessarily permitted back in the '70s when the building was originally built. I took it, made the presumption that they were. So that really is the only difference in the draft between the preliminary draft letter that you saw and the one that is presented for final approval tonight, is the fact that they asked that I remove the reference to the fact that those conditions were grandfathered in. So if you don't know, once a building is built under an old permit, if you move on to, move into the future, buildings are not obligated to be brought up to the current code as long as you're not doing new work. They are what we call grandfathered into existence. But now we're doing new work in this building, and so now we need to make the improvements to bring anything we touch up to the current code. So like I say, the big issue that came to, came to the light of day is when we removed all the ceilings, we determined that there was a decent amount of walls at the corridors that did not have fire ratings that were completed. Like I say, I've reviewed the old drawings, and it seemed to me that that was not necessarily a violation at that time, but it is certainly not permitted in today's building code. So those conditions are going to need to be addressed. But the problem is that the limited amount of work and the limited amount of time we have this summer, we cannot get that work accomplished before, before school starts. So the building department has asked that I, I draft a letter that would be then signed by the school board, and they also specifically asked that the principal, Tina, would sign the letter as well because they want her to be aware of what's going on and because of the fact that she's basically here managing the building on a daily basis. So like I say, I think the letter is pretty self-explanatory. We're doing a limited amount of work this summer. The intention is, we expect to open the building up this fall with the ceilings all removed, like what you see here in this room, as well as in the corridors. And we actually made a decision just yesterday that we're going to continue to have the current contractor, Century Construction, do some of the patching work of the walls above the ceilings and let that carry on into the school year on evenings and weekends and likely on Wednesdays when school's not in session. And so that will give, give the building department reassurance that we are continuing to move forward and address the issues as quickly as we can. The building permit that we have will remain open as an open permit that will then be extended with Phase Two, which will be permitted this fall. And then the intention would be that we would complete the project by the start of school in 2021. So like I say, I think that it's kind of a formality. I think it brings everything together so the building department understands exactly what we're doing now, what our intentions are in the future, and just puts everybody on a comfort level that this is all going to get addressed in due time. Like I say in the letter, I think the fact that some of these conditions are now known, just by the mere fact that they are now known, is a improvement in safety as opposed to assuming that all these fire separations were there and they weren't actually in place. So we're learning a lot about the building. Removing all these ceilings has given us a lot of insight, which will absolutely be helpful in our design work going forward and certainly in planning and executing the work next summer. So we're, in my mind, we're doing exactly what we had planned to do. We always run into unforeseen conditions with any renovation. And when I talked to the building inspector and he talked to the building commissioner, they requested a letter that would explain all this, and I said, "That makes all sense in the world." So if there's any questions you might have, I'm here to answer them.
I think it's worth just talking a little bit more for both our board and public watching from home just to explain how these are not safety issues, that our children are still safe at school, at the high school, even though our, the codes may not be exactly what is needed for this, for this generation, for this time period, why the building department is saying, "Okay, well, if your permit is open, why, why are our students still being fed?"
Well, again, buildings, old buildings exist all over the country, and they are all constructed under the code at the time, and the codes do change over time. You know, I believe the building is certainly safe. It meets all the standards that were, that were in existence at that time. We've actually learned, on top of the fact that we've got some of these open conditions that we will continue to address and seal up, we realized that there is an existing smoke evacuation system in the building that I'm not certain that any of us were fully aware of, and that was a great, great news. So one of the things we will be doing is making sure that that system is up and operational. We will be adding additional smoke detection that will, again, will work with the building department, the fire department, to make sure that that gives an added level of safety that actually was not part of the original design. So we are, we are basically working, moving forward with elevating the safety above and beyond what existed previously. And that's, that's really what the intent was always about this job. When we're done, the new, with the Phase Two work, you will have a brand-new fire alarm system, and all these separations, fire separations will be completed. They will be done sooner than later. But there's a whole host of additional safety features that will be incorporated in Phase Two.
Other questions? I don't see a key or a tissue box or a coat can, so. Nothing else for Mr. Hicks?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Atwood.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. All right, moving on in our agenda, item three of the education committee report. Mrs. Rarica.
Okay, we have our resolution to adopt our remote learning model. I'll just read the first couple paragraphs. Whereas on June 29th, 2020, HB 164 was passed by the Ohio General Assembly and signed by Governor Dewine on June 19th, 2020. And whereas House Bill 164 allows school districts in the state of Ohio to adopt, adopt a remote learning model for at least the 2020, 2021 school year and possibly beyond. I'll stop there. I'd like to move to have a motion to accept this.
Okay, well, we're actually going to lump this with 3.02 as well, so.
All right. We also have a health textbook adoption. We have two textbooks for health classes. Essential Health Skills, Third Edition, and Essential Health Skills for Middle School, Second Edition, both by Catherine Sanderson, Diane Farthing, Mark Zillman, and Melanie Lynch, and Melissa Munzel, oh, and Mary McCarley, by the Good Heart Will Cops publisher. I guess I'd like to move to have both of those adopted.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I do welcome Board Member Rarica for that resolution on remote learning. It is time-sensitive. We will send it to ODE tomorrow since July, we have a July 3rd, 1st deadline to get that to campus. So thank you.
I would just like to say something more about a remote learning. I had some parents bring up that our remote learning choice had bad reviews, and I just want the public to know that we've looked at those, and there is a reason those exist. A district chose it hastily in the spring, no training. So of course, they had a pretty ride with it. And so a lot of grumbly teenagers had a lot of things to say about it. But our teachers, our committee, who is staffs and teachers, tried out several programs, and if Christina wants to add more to what I'm saying, or correct me, or whatever, that they tried out several, and they did test runs as teacher and as student, and that the Edgenuity program was the best that they found. And it's not going to be perfect, and it's not going to run smoothly for all of us all the time. You know, but we are definitely going to have a better time than these reviewers did. We've had time to get to know it, our teachers, and they'll be able to roll it out to us in a wonderful way. And that they did do their due diligence researching to get the best one they could for us.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mrs. Rarica. We did have a team to look at a K to five approach, a six to 12 approach, and we had some tools already. We liked these better. We did the student perspective, the teacher perspective, looked at our standards, saw how we can make modifications if necessary. So this by far was the winner, the award winner for this approach. And not everything is perfect, but we will do our best to have it meet our needs and the needs of our students and families.
And then about the health texts, I'm just, you know.
So I'm happy to say.
Amber might have something to say too, but we haven't seen the book, so.
So these textbooks, I'm grateful for the work of Beth Kazmyer, one of our teachers, who's here with us tonight, Jennifer List, and Brian Pittsir at the high school level. So the three of them have come together looking for resources that are more up to date and that are stronger in their own right. This is a 2021 adoption. We like this particular series for a couple of reasons. One, with an online series that we'll be adopting for the next six years, we will receive all the updates that they have. So for example, we know we're going through a pandemic. They have a chapter devoted to the pandemic to explain to students already. Because it's an online resource, they can make those changes, and they can make them available to our students and our teachers to use as they see fit. We also know in the state of Ohio, there have been a lot more emphasis on the opioid epidemic and how we're teaching kids about prevention. And in the past, and Beth can speak to this certainly, they sought out experts with the CDC and different health organizations to find good resources, even things like vaping. It wasn't a part of our health textbook a decade ago, but it certainly is now. So instead of the teachers seeking out resources on their own, which they'll still do, but just not to the level of extent, this is a more updated resource that will address the needs, we think, of what the state law in Ohio asks us to do and also what's relevant to our students. So Mrs. Kazmyer's here as well, if you have questions for her. But we're actually really excited to bring this forth for an adoption, and we think the health skills will be really helpful to our students.
Any other questions?
Are there some questions?
Amber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, in regards to the health texts, I would be interested in learning about the comprehensive sex education portion as well as how the drug portion approaches changes with regards to marijuana. As we know, there have been many states changing those laws, decriminalizing medical marijuana usage, things like that. Can you maybe touch on these items, and in what ways are we addressing these things?
So your first item, this is an Essential Health Skills text, so it doesn't go in as much detail deliberately for a comprehensive, comprehensive sexual discussion. What we do for, what we have done in the past is we have a third-party vendor that comes in and speaks to our students and works with our health teacher. And Beth is very familiar with that, as is our high school staff, so much so that they don't even need their support, but it's nice to have a third-party support in that area. If, for the, the medical marijuana, in this, it takes a more academic approach to that. It will talk about, it will eventually talk about the laws and the changes in the law. But it focuses, for the middle school, it'll focus mostly on tobacco and vaping, alcohol, and then medications and drugs. The same at the high school, but at a more age-appropriate, developmentally age-appropriate level. So I don't think that it's going to have a stance about what is good or bad. It's going to have a more academic approach to, here's what's going on. And Beth, have you have other items about that?
No, I have a question.
Okay. Anytime we have those conversations that are a little more sensitive, we share with parents what's coming up in the class so that parents are aware because we think that's important as well. And parents, if they need to have conversations with the teacher at either the middle school level or the high school level. Health is an important content area. It's an important subject, but we treat it with a great deal of respect and sensitivity.
Thank you.
I happen to know, I subbed her list before, and on that day, the kids were talking about dating violence, which would go into sex ed. And I was really proud of the things that they were telling me. I mean, we just sat and they just told me their things, and they were really good about it.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Beth?
Mrs. Rayber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rare?
Yes.
Item four, personnel. Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you. Under 4.01, we do have two resignations. We'd like to say goodbye to Thomas House, who was accepted to position as an assistant principal in another district. And Kristen Post, we wish her well. She is moving. So that will definitely be a loss to our staff. Then under, also people activities contract, we did have a resignation for eighth grade football that went through earlier in the spring. Now, under employment, 4.02, it is quite lengthy. We have administrative and also civil service positions of people currently employed that we are continuing their employment. So that's in numbers one, two, and three. Then item four, these are teachers who are advancing in their first three years up the salary schedule to continuing contract. So the first group are getting continuing contract. The next group, they're moving to the third year, second year. And also down at the bottom, we do have a new hire, Kevin Bowden in mathematics, because he's replacing Mr. Haas, who is leaving. So I'm going to skip number, it says number four, but it's really number five, because that's going to be a separate vote. And bounce to number six, which is on the bottom of the next page. These are extended services, counselors and psychologists having some extra days, which I think we'll definitely need this year as we have to redo schedules and everything due to, as we figure out who's in virtual and who is here. And number seven are several classified subs, which we're very grateful they're going to work for us as subs. So I'm going to stop there, and then we'll do number five separately.
I will motion for approval of 4.01 and 4.02, numbers one through four, and also six and seven. I'll second.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden? Ms. Bowden?
Removed.
Nope.
Yes, sorry, they're moving outside. I turned for mute on.
Mrs. Rayber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rare?
Yes.
Okay, so now number five, it's the rehire of our educational aides and student assistants who are typically non-renewed at the end of the year. We are bringing them all back, so that is what number five, that is the list of our aides and student assistants. So we'd like to welcome them all back.
I'll motion to approve the employment recommendations. I'll second.
Mr. Atwood?
So before we go to vote, I just want to mention that I will be abstaining from this vote.
Ms. Atwood?
Abstain?
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayber?
Yes.
Mrs. Rare?
Yes.
All right, continuing on to number five, this is the finance committee. Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. As I said at our committee meeting, the government has decided to keep public school funding at last year's funding rate, which was cut by almost 5%. However, we are leaving its options open to reduce public school funding further this year in case state revenues don't meet expectations. Cutting public school revenues will help balance the state budget. We have been spending a lot of time analyzing the new expanded FMOA and its effect on staffing in schools. We will have new forms available for staff very soon. Costs for safety equipment for both staff and students continue to escalate quickly for COVID. I will have an estimate on this year's expected costs very soon for the board to review. On the agenda, 5.01, financial reports. The monthly financial reports that change order listings for our on-board construction projects are attached for your approval. When you review the CFO reports, you will see that our year-end fiscal picture was very close to estimated in both November and May at full costs. Our general cash balance equals just over 120 days' cash on June 30th. I cannot emphasize enough just how important it is to keep our cash balance large enough to meet unexpected issues like state funding cuts and larger expenditures due to COVID restrictions. Our board policy sets minimum cash balances requirements at 98. 5.02, appropriation resolutions, temporary appropriation resolutions for the current year since our budget. 5.03, county auditor of estimated resources. This is our estimated revenues for the current year. 5.04, 5.05, 5.06 are our transportation contracts for the current year with Peterman, Medicare, and Universal Transportation. 5.07, it's a financial agreement with the children's side to provide education for students that require additional services. 5.08, an amendment to the professional agreement with SHP. This change to our architects contract includes additional services in future construction projects, including the replacement of windows at Williams West Wing, Sharpsburg Primary, and to replace the roof at the high school where I grew up. 5.09 is the utilities group energy agreement. This group will be helping with district buying additional utility savings and exploring future rebates. 5.10, new accounts. You're approving our state and federal grants as well as adding another student activity account. 5.11, transfers. We have three transfers on the agenda tonight. I do want to discuss them just briefly. The first one, I'm very proud to say they provide funding for the final debt payment on some very old debt that the district has had for years. The district can now say it is debt-free except for our new bonds used to renovate the buildings. We will make that final payment in December. 5.1, oh, I'm sorry. The second transfer is caused by the pandemic cancellation of the prom and the loss of the deposit, which the general fund will return to the students of the class of 2021, with forward permission. The last transfer is the transfer of fundraising money from the class of '19 to the class of '21. Finally, 5.12, professional memberships, as discussed last meeting. These are business declarations of professional memberships for the superintendent and treasurer. 5.13, authorize the superintendent and treasurer to deliver the letter to the Norwood Building Department as reviewed in Mr. Hissick's discussions. 5.14, purchase over $30,000. To follow board policy, the board must approve any large purchases. This large purchase is to buy the transparents remaining to protect students in classrooms during COVID restrictions. And I believe those are four right there. I think that purchase was $180,000.
I don't see a little tally down here, but we.
That was just right in the middle.
Okay, okay, so I can go ahead and call for that. So I will motion to approve items 5.01 to 5.14. I'll second that. Any discussion?
Brandon has a question.
Oh, Brandon, I'm sorry. I forget. I forget to look over there. Go ahead, Brandon.
So I just want to highlight how much we place an importance on the safety of our staff and our students, especially as we go through this whole pandemic process, that we are willing to pull the trigger on purchasing over $100,000 worth of plexiglass shielding for the desks. So, you know, I just want to commend everyone involved in that to get those together and to get that order in place so that, you know, we can have delivery of that before the school. And the fact that, you know, as a district, we're willing to spend over $100,000 to help ensure the safety of our students and our staff. So I think that's fantastic.
Thank you for bringing that up, President Atwood, I do appreciate it, and I hope that the camera can pan on the different kinds of desks we have. We actually had the company come out, measure all our desks, and special order the Plexiglas for our students' safety, to make sure it fit on all the various desk sizes and tables that we have in the district as an added measure of safety.
Do they have a buyback program for hopefully when we reach the time when this isn't needed on our desks? Or recycling program of some sort for this plastic?
Possibly, but I would imagine some teachers may like to keep those enclosures for little cubbies in various places in their classroom. So I really don't see them going to waste. I think that teachers will want to keep them.
I know, when I see them, I think, man, could have used those lots of times when I was subbing. Stop touching your neighbor, here's some Plexiglas.
Exactly. I think it was very popular.
I've always wanted walls in between students. Normally, they couldn't see through them, so they couldn't see that their neighbor was looking at them, which I got that complaint a lot. Yeah, that would be nice.
So I think they'll be in our classrooms for years.
They could probably have other uses.
I just want to thank Mrs. Camphouse again for your fantastic efforts and coming in so close to your forecast. That's just, that's awesome.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that.
I feel like if anybody wants to make a donation to their classrooms, I feel like dry erase markers, where the kids can personalize their shields, will be a big hit this fall.
All right, please call a roll. Ms. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brer?
Yes.
Okay, item six is hearing of the public, and we have no public here, so we'll move right on to number seven, which is reports. So item 7.01, board announcements.
Did we have any emails?
No, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. I have it up right now, we do not have any emails.
I would just like to say thank you to N C T and to our tech department for being able to support our out-of-town setup for Brandon and I, so kudos to N C T and to Randall for getting us on board.
Anybody else? All right, 7.02, superintendents report. Mrs. Rimmer?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have three items. The first is, I would like to thank Rotary Club 17 for the landscaping assistance at the high school in at Williams. When you came in here last week, you saw those large piles of mulch, where about 30 Rotaries came on Saturday morning in the heat and laid all the mulch down, and pulled up the weeds, and trimmed the shrubs. So I would write a thank you from the board to Rotary Club 17. Second item, we put together a question and answer, just because we're getting lots of emails and lots of questions, and there's a hard copy on your tables. And I thank you Christina for organizing this. She took all the emails and calls that are coming in, and I'd like the board to take a look at it, because I know you're also fielding questions, and we're also going to post it on our Facebook page and on our website. And we tried to put an index, so depending on if it's health services, or if it's preschool, or whatever it is, you could quickly find the answer to your question, because chances are, another parent has asked that very same question, and it's getting hard to call every single person and email every single person back. Although I have to thank Alice, I know you've been fielding a lot of questions, and we really do appreciate it. But it is an overwhelming task, so we had to put this together, and we'll put it up tomorrow morning. And then the third, my third item is, I have asked our A D, Alex Heinz, to come, just because O H S A A has put out their latest guidance, and I figure individuals, or everyone's going to be interested, and there'll probably be some questions. So Alex, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Last evening, the O H S A A sent a return-to-play recommendation document to all schools in Ohio. This document was put together by the O H S A A with help from the Ohio Joint Advisory Committee on Sports Medicine, the NFHS, and the Ohio Lieutenant Governor's Office. As of this evening, all fall sports are planning to start Saturday, August 1st. However, the Governor's Office has not given the okay for us to start sports. So the recommendations that they did give, obviously, if the Governor says that we can have sports, then those are the recommendations that we will go with. If he says no sports, then obviously, we will not have to use them. The document is extensive, it's about 22 pages. But as far as the general recommendations that the O H S A A gave us, nothing really was a surprise on our end. I feel like all of the things that they are asking us to do were things that we were already doing, or things that we were already starting to plan for. There are some specific rule changes for certain sports. For example, like in football, the official, they're going to try and keep the official from having to touch the ball after every single play, so they're going to make the offensive team bring the ball back into the huddle. So a few small changes like that for each sport. And then just a little summary of the recommendations. I guess just a few of them, sanitizing the benches and locker rooms before games, having hand sanitizer on each team's bench, spacing out the chairs on each bench. When traveling, all of the players have to do their screening and temperature checks before getting on the bus, and then again, as soon as they arrive at the school. All of the coaches wear masks throughout the entire game, so pre-game, during the game, and after the game. Players on the bench will wear masks until they go into the field for play, so even if they are dressed for the game, they will wear their masks while they're on the bench until they head out onto the field or onto the gym floor. We are going to ask that our teams travel to games already dressed, so that we don't have to use the locker rooms. There will not be any post-game handshakes, and all fans will wear masks and have their temperatures checked before they enter. And the limit for the temperature is 100.4, so if anyone's above that, they will not be allowed in. But it's not any information that we are going to keep, it is just a quick check there, and that's it. So, do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
104?
No, 104.
104.
104.
Oh, 104. I was a little worried there for a second. Thank you.
And these are recommendations as well. We can adjust and modify as we see fit, so.
Other questions? I think that's it. All right, thank you, Mr. Heinz. Item 7.03, the Great Oaks Report, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First, I'd like to say that our kickoff this year was supposed to be our big 50th anniversary celebration for the Oaks. Our fundraiser event is normally held at the end of July, was canceled, but we are still collecting donations through our website if anybody is interested, and the collection goes towards scholarships for our Oaks students. We have continuing construction updates with our new outbuilding for construction and mechanics, as well as an updated facility for our beauty school department and cosmetology department. Our Oaks plan for this fall will be going A B schedule, but it'll be a little bit different than ours. It'll be on Monday, Wednesday, excuse me, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, with Wednesdays off. If you have questions about busing, or about which group your child might be in, please contact the Scarlet Oaks office directly, and they can get you more information on your grouping. And emails should have been sent out last week to the Scarlet Oaks parents that are involved in that program. The plan for A B scheduling is scheduled to go through the first quarter, which will end around October 16. It will be reassessed right before that, if we'll be continuing the A B schedule, or if we will be switching back to a five-day-a-week, or staying on remote learning. Remote learning will be a part of our Wednesday curriculum, where students who have their standard classes, they can maintain those at that time from home. Labs will be done one of the two days, and in-class learning will be done the other day. And there's time to group juniors together and seniors together to make sure that those students are separated, just for social distancing. We were also able, this last month's meeting, to create our equity committee. I was appointed onto that committee. We are still in our early stages of developing a mission statement for that group, and as soon as we have one, I'll pass that along. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Amber, could I ask, would you send us the schedule for the Oaks? Because we're getting calls, and we aren't aware of what they're doing. So if you had that in writing, if you could email it to us, because we are getting asked.
I was actually going to ask you if you'd like to include that in your S A Q sheet for parents. I'd be happy to forward you the information that I have.
All right. Item 7.04, Norwood Community Television, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. In addition to the great work that N C T has done for putting together our meetings and all of the city meetings, they have also produced 12 virtual camp videos for Avenue's for Success, and are finishing up the last of those tonight. So N C T is rocking it out.
Good job.
That's it for my report.
Item 7.05, OSBA Legislative Report, Mrs. Brer.
There's a House Bill 123 that has not been passed, they're just talking, and it's a Violence Prevention Clubs House Bill, which I thought was interesting, but it's not much to talk about just yet. And I know they've had a lot of drama in the legislature, but it doesn't have anything to do with us.
You can figure out.
It is pretty big.
All right, 7.06, Avenue's for Success, Mrs. Rayburn.
So, right now, for the whole month of July, Avenue's for Success has been having the summer blast camp, which has all been online and on-demand. It still is going on through July 31st, so if you go to avenuesforsuccess.net, click the on-demand tab, and then it asks for a password. The password is norwoodisawesome, all lowercase, no spaces. Then you click on the logo, and then it directs you. There are tons of videos, there's a great assortment of different kinds of topics for different ages as well. So those new videos are posted every week, so you can go there and check those out. And then students can post flipgrid videos of them doing the different, you know, videos, different activities. Also, tomorrow, tomorrow? 25th?
Call.
Saturday, yes, the 25th, is the back-to-school supply event. Instead of it being a regular bounce back-to-school, splash back-to-school, it's going to be a drive-through circus for all ages. So the schedule will be split up by school, so if you go to Sharpsburg, you can drive through and pick up supplies from 11 until 12. Norwood View will be 12 to 1, Williams will be 1 to 2, and then the middle school and high school will be 2 to 3. It's a drive-through-only event, can't walk through. And it's in the old Kruger Plaza parking lot, which you can access from Montgomery Road go-by, where Captain D's used to be, drive through there. Also, looking forward, so I believe Avenue's will have before and after-school care, the difference will be, they're going to be a little more limited, you'll have to meet that 1 to 9 ratio that's required for childcare now. And as far as enrichment programs go, Avenue's normally has lots of after-school clubs, but looking at that being pretty much all on-demand activities online this year, there will be no charge for that, though, so that will be accessed, be able to be accessed by all students at any time, similar to how the summer camp is going on, so that's all.
Chris Allen?
Yeah.
Was there a clarification, if you've got children maybe in one of the elementaries in the middle school or high school, are families allowed to pick up at once?
Um, you know...
Or do they have to come back?
I'm not totally sure on that, but I can find out.
Item eight on the agenda, these are future meeting notifications. So our next committee meeting will be on August 11th, 2020, here in the Norwood High School cafeteria. And the regular board meeting will be on August 20th of 2020, once again, here in the Norwood High School cafeteria. So I will motion to approve the future meetings listed.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Okay, please call a roll. Ms. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brer?
Yes.
Okay, item nine is items removed for separate consideration. We don't have any agenda items listed there. So number 10 is closing items, so I will motion to adjourn. I'll second. Please call a roll. Ms. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rimmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Brer?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.